It's clock and as customary, we always have a word of prayer before we start our meeting. And I've asked Commissioner Brown if he would lead us in this prayer.
Let us pray. Dear my Father, we just thank you so much, Lord, for giving us the gift of life this morning, waking us up and bringing us here. Thank you that we live in a county in a country that we can come in a place like this, open forum and seek you out openly and freely. And we just ask you continued blessings on this country and county, Lord, and that we continue to have those freedoms and fight for those freedoms as individuals, Lord. We just ask your protection and watch over all our county employees, Lord. Thank you for everything they do for us, Lord. Be with us tonight as we conduct county business, be with each and every one of us. May your will be done, Lord, and may we do everything pleasing to you. We just ask you to be with us tonight. And we especially lift up those, it seems like so many, Lord, this past week that lost loved ones or had loved ones that suffer medical conditions. And we just lift up those families, Lord, be with them, keep them close to you, Lord, give them comfort. And we just ask you to be with us tonight, keep us safe as we travel home. And we ask this all in your son's precious holy name. Amen.
Amen. Let's all stand for a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. We'll call to order our Hart County Board of Commissioners' meeting of August the 12th, 2025. And first, I'd like to welcome each one that is here in person, or whether you're watching by HTC Channel 3 or watching by our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. We welcome everyone. First, we need to approve the agenda. Do we have any additions?
Yes, sir. Must add under old business 12 A, the second reading of fireworks, people have fireworks for us. And Mr. Willie Jackson has requested to appear before the board, and I think that he called me late, but people left and I forgot about it. Our bodies trying to speak, it's too small for a bench or whatever. If y'all want to hear that, that's up to y'all later if you want to.
I'm fine with it. I don't have problem.
We should have the information ahead of time, so we're...
I understand. He did call me Friday afternoon. I printed y'all the information out there. Y'all...
You want to add it to 13E?
I did see this information two to three weeks ago and informed Mr. Jackson to get in touch with Terrell to get this on the agenda, and I assumed that he would get this, everything that was needed. And I guess, you know, I don't think my job's pretty around, so... But I was informed of it two or three weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, it's just big.
It's pretty cut and dry, simple.
There's no way I can prove it, maybe, in the final order.
I still... Where's that? I still...
Last page, last two pages.
All right, what's the board you want to add it?
As new business 13E.
That's where it'd have to go, right? 13E?
Yeah.
This one's new, it's fresh.
Mr. Chairman, you looking for a motion for those changes?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
Second.
Okay. You got a motion back from Mr. Brown, second back from Mr. Dorsey. Any questions? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. Okay, it's 5-0 vote. All right, then we'll move on to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Any additions or corrections that need to be made in your minutes? If not, can we get a motion to approve as printed?
So moved.
Second. By Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's 5-0 vote. We'll move on down to remarks by invited guests, committees, or authorities. We do have Hart or Main Street here. And so we'll turn the floor over to...
I'll just stand here. All right. Thank you all for saving tonight. My name is Elizabeth Olney. I'm the program coordinator for Hart or Main Street, and I'm here to do our annual request to use the county courthouse square for our scarecrow's on the square set. There's really no changes to how it'll run. All the scarecrows are required in the mulch, not on the grass. They'll be set up the Saturday before October 1st, which is the 30th of November, no, of September, and then we'll try to get them down by the 31st, I mean, by the 1st of November, which is the Saturday right after Halloween, but sometimes it does take them a while. So they'll definitely be down by the following Saturday.
I'll make a motion to approve Main Street's credit requests.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? Any questions? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's 5-0 vote.
Thank you guys so much.
All right. Thank you. Reports by Constitutional Officers, Department of Heads. Okay. County Administrator's report.
... Actually, we gave it out on the $6,491. Our changes to the county authorities, say for about $76,000. I bet we made it 318,74 to one short one to be in 49,000. We're probably getting $17,896, lost 36,900, 879, over 970. The administration, 8571, over 900, the layup, the pension, due to the power agreement, 146, 1.4. So we... Where we do 3032, and 11 over 100, 100 over 100. We're actually including the... Not, uh, Mr. Wilson, Wes, why not suppose to be kind of going to be paid on the 10th of February? Why we have to raise to the season, not a thing. First, January, February, March, I read this top one, I read the whole, people going through the scale, and that's just... So you took them all right, and they did one, they did one, they did one, and all the years that we made the change, and so we didn't appreciate it, and a lot of them changed, but we did increase it over the previous person, even, or make a little money, over the end of the year, that... She showed... So just a lot of years, took our changes, and what I thought I was doing long ago here, see, we're getting negative, and we're going down. So there's a point, we stayed, we made a change, about 100, or 100,000, if I could come down, since we've gone down, from down to about 600, 670,000, about...
So just so everybody knows, the reason I asked Terrell to put this up here is prior to the change, Hart County taxpayers are subsidizing people from other county bringing trash in here and dumping it. And we fixed that. There's a lot of grumbling about it, a lot of complaining about it, but you've got people from neighboring counties bringing trash in here, and that's why we went up on a fee for those folks and not Hart County residents, because they should be the other way around. They should be subsidizing Hart County's operation, not Hart County taxpayers subsidizing neighboring trash disposal. So that's why we did what we did.
Kind of caused a change, actually, today we done it.
Other counties started doing it.
We adjust theirs, it's the same thing we were doing, because that's what happens. State managing counties don't even, won't even accept at all, no competition. So we would get bombarded because we was less miracle, and when we raised ours, the other counties get bombarded, because they were very smug. So it just to bounce things out and keep us in the dream, in the dream going forward.
Well, we were one of the two counties within what a 50-mile radius that takes C and D, so...
Other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thanks. As far as Chairman's report, I would just like to publicly thank and congratulate the Hart County Little League Girls Softball for their representation of Hart County in Delaware. And we didn't have the outcome we'd hoped for, but we still very proud of these girls and appreciate the coaches and the girls taking the time to go there to represent Hart County. And that's all I got. I'll turn it over to District 1.
I don't have a whole lot either, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to thank those girls as well. Those little girls didn't get there with their hands in their pockets. They worked hard to get there, and we need to recognize that, you know? It's just amazing for our county to have these kind of athletes, you know, at these early ages. And also, just like to once again thank all those that keep the wheels turning in Hart County, in our Hart County system. You know, our county's just a great county. We operate in a black, and we just have good people that's there, and I'd like to thank all of those. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Teasley.
I too would like to thank the Little League Softball for representing Hart County, the southeast, and it's pretty nice getting to hear them call our name on ESPN and stuff like that. Really appreciate them and the coaches. And like what Commissioner Bennett says, appreciate the job all our county employees do, and our law enforcement for keeping us safe, and we got the sheriff in the room with us here tonight. Appreciate you being here, and that's all I got.
And one other note, I did invite the girls softball team to be here, but they've been pretty busy since they've been back, and they're in softball season, so they've got a lot going on, but we'll have them up here sometime to recognize them. District 4, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, just following along there. Huge congratulations to those girls and those coaches. Great job, great accomplishment, and that's something that, you know, hopefully we'll be able to commemorate them with some, with a resolution, and, you know, that'll give inspiration to the other ones coming up to see what they can accomplish, and hopefully it won't be the last group that we have go that far in the series. And I just can't say enough about them, those coaches. I know a lot of, a lot of hard work, time, dedication, and congratulations to them. That's something they'll remember forever. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
District 5, Commissioner Dorsey?
Yeah, I also want to echo those same sentiments for those ladies and parents, and all the local businesses and sponsors that help support them and help get them there. It's not, it takes a village, and kudos to all involved. I do want to make an announcement, I didn't know if Terrell was going to do it or not, but tomorrow night, beginning at 7 o'clock, Highway 51 at the railroad, well, it won't be at the railroad crossing, but Highway 51 will be closed in Bowersville for railroad crossing repair. It should be opened back up by 7:00 a.m. Thursday morning, so just, so everybody knows, DOT's got detour set up around that, so that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Dorsey. Commissioner Brown, you mind doing our Ag advertisement for Saturday?
Oh, yeah. So this, this Saturday, I forget what, this is probably the 10th or more, Northeast Georgia Ag Expo will be held at the AgriScience Center. I do believe parking will be available there instead of having to shuttle from the YMCA this year, so you should be able to park on site. But just can't say enough about that group of guys and girls that worked so hard to put this together. Brian Fleming has been heading this up for many years now, and helped with a good buddy, Steve Burton. It not only helps a personal level, but as well as the school system. Appreciate those guys and what they do. This event has grown from not only just something here in Hart County and highlighting Hart County agriculture, but embodying the whole Northeast Georgia, and it seems more and more counties are getting involved in this, and there's more and more exhibits every year, and what a great opportunity. Just encourage everyone to stop by. I believe it starts at 9:00 a.m. Is that correct? Yeah, it starts at 9:00. There'll be a few special events, I think, such as the kids tractor race, of course, the antique tractor show, and then there'll be, actually, it's a fam, or I say famous, I guess it's famous to some people, but a spokesperson for agriculture, I think he is what kids call today an influencer, whatever that means. But he nonetheless has a big following, and he has agreed to come out and is real supportive of the event, so that's going to help this event even more, just reaching more on the state and national level. So just can't say enough about those guys. Orange Way, too, for facilitating the background information, getting everything together and organized. And just encourage everybody to come out, great opportunity to learn more about our number one industry in our state and our county, and get to see some cool tractors, and they may even be, get on one, so encourage everyone to come out.
All right, thank you.
I did want to say, I forgot to mention, too, when Commissioner Dorsey said about the road, the four-way stop on Junction 77 and Livonia Highway, it should be complete. Terrell, was it supposed to be complete by the end of this week?
It was done, yeah, on Monday, yesterday.
I thought they got rained out.
That's what they said, it wasn't supposed to be complete by Thursday.
But Thursday, okay. And I just want to say that, you know, I know Representative Powell has been working on that for some time, as well as the board here that preceded me before I was a commissioner, was a constituent, and I was one of those people calling about that intersection, a very dangerous intersection, and it may not be the best or what everybody wants, but I do think that's going to be well needed and well received to have that four-way, and it's probably going to save a lot of lives. So glad to see that going in.
All right. One other note on that, I know there's been some comments made about a roundabout there. And I remember within two to three years of me being on the Board of Commissioners, we met with the GDOT and the commissioners rode in a van, and we had all speculations of what we needed done here, and that was a recommendation up there at that intersection for a roundabout. And then Commissioner Dorsey and Terrell and myself went to a GDOT meeting in Conover, and we asked about that roundabout. And their reply was, what roundabout? And my reply was, the roundabout y'all talked about, that you had the engineering done and all these things done, and where's it at? And the reply was, you missed my point. What roundabout? So they just done away with it, you know, for whatever reason. Maybe the money wasn't there, whatever, but originally it was supposed to have been a roundabout, but, you know, four-way stop may be a better solution for the time, but eventually there may be a roundabout there. So just wanted to throw that in there. We'll move on to Old Business 12A Bid Awards for the second road paving.
Now, we've got a bid to have in the bag, and this is just so folks can know, this is a walkway, as Johnson said, it's sort of new, it's a turf, it's going to be a dog man, he's talking to the deer, and sort of... The Stratton Sons is low there, and that's who hired them.
Make a motion, we approve County Administrator's recommendation and award the second road paving bid for 2025 to Stratton Sons.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Mr. Teasley. Any discussions?
I wouldn't abstain from this vote, since I abstained from the last one.
Okay.
Seen conflict of interest, so...
All right. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's a four in one abstention. All right. We'll move on to the bid award for the jail health services.
We've seen, we've been through all the bids up this year, based on the pricing and the surrounding county's opinion of the court care service, that's the word, and if you're good foot, those are the most good.
Make a motion, we take the recommendation of the sheriff and county administrator and award the jail inmate health care bid to court care.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Mr. Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's 5-0 vote. So we'll move on down to the Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter Agreement. Send your packet there, it has been updated.
And also, I put the latest stats that we got, I said, we bear it real, I see how it is.
That's not our update, from the comments that went out last September, then again, last week, that is the suggested revision, so animal shelter.
That's various, the highlighted, the highlighted. I was going to ask that.
It seems not, other than in the first couple paragraphs where they were going to provide animal shelter, they brought that back to providing services for the animal shelter.
Well, I think before we enter into any contract, I said this before when I talked to everybody, there needs to be, there needs to be an intergovernmental agreement that everybody agrees to the same funding formula. I don't feel like it's in the best interest of Hart County to enter into a contract and agree into a funding formula in the services if everybody else is not going to be bound to that contract, actually.
Well, I agree with you there. I don't want Hart County's feet to be held to the fire if nobody else is as well.
And I also feel like that we need representation on this Board of Directors, and I don't know from a legality standpoint if this is an LLC or whatever, but if Hart County and Franklin County are the two largest funding partners, I foresee Board of Directors, that three members come from Hart County, three members come from Franklin County, and maybe one commissioner from Hart County, one commissioner from Franklin County, serving alternating years. That way you have a seven-member board of directors, because we don't get information from these folks like we should.
Now, they're 501(c), right? They're 501(c). Is that right?
I don't know if I've seen them or if I'm going to...
How many's on your board, man?
I have no idea.
I know they got a board, I don't know.
I spoke to Franklin County, they pay on the same form as they don't come out.
Contract. There needs to be an intergovernmental agreement with everybody, because Bowersville doesn't pay anything. That's just my thoughts. I mean, I think that, you know, we funded this last year for that new building that we didn't, never even consulted about, and, you know, it's still not open, is my understanding. So I just think we need to get everybody together, everybody agree with the same funding formula, that way everybody's on the same page.
I agree, I agree with that, too. But Bowersville's not on the list, don't look like they have any dogs up there.
Yeah, they weren't on there.
They're in the contract, though.
Yeah, but I hope this quarter's a little bit...
All right, Ms. Kim, could everyone that's involved in this contract, could this contract be between all these entities and Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter? And then we put a signature page for all of these entities that's involved, and then that way everybody knows what everybody else is doing. Can we do something like that?
Sure.
Intergovernmental agreement. Perfect for that. But I do think that there needs to be some representation on this Board of Directors.
Do they have bylaws that...
I have some, I can ask.
That'd be interesting to look at, too.
If they did, I think that a Board of Director should be the governing body on the access.
Because...
I think they got a five, I think, Terrell, you still have a few on the board. I don't have to get that, I don't have to think, I think they're perfect with five.
Well, you think about it, you got your water authority, we appoint members there, we have...
Airport authority.
Airport authority, we appoint members there, and, you know, and we have all these other organizations that we appoint, I mean, the thing about Mr. Chaffin, he serves on several boards, force, that we appoint for those positions.
So the board is... Right, so...
Do we have, do we have any... But they're county-funded.
That's right, and that's, that's my point. If we're going to spend the kind of money we're spending, we should have representation from Hart County on there. And I do, I know there are some board members on there, but...
From the consensus, I feel like that we'd be glad to sign this, but we'd want to see everybody else involved on the same contract, right? Is that what...
I really wouldn't include the animal shelter.
It would be off.
That would be back to separate contracts. For them to be where they were supposed to be, so we'd sign the contracts. I'm not opposed to have a signature page for every entity if they do that, but still the intergovernmental agreement, it's more or less a contract.
Right.
If it reaches out, I would be there, government agreement.
I think Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter should be the one to take the lead, because they're the ones getting the funding. That's just my thoughts. That's just my thoughts.
Sure. I'm going to share.
Share, please.
That's where the contracts came up. Just reach.
We'll just check on that. We won't take any action on it tonight.
We're going to check on both Franklin County and Hart County having board members too. I guess that'd be part of it, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. At least we could elect a board member if we can't have a commissioner in each.
What I've said is that if we had a tie vote, we'd have a representative from one of the boards, like maybe a Hart County commissioner on an even number of years and Franklin County the odd number of years.
Sure.
All right. Moving on 12D, permission to solicit bids for the rec basketball uniforms?
We just want permission to send our bid out.
I make a motion for.
Can we clarify something?
Sure.
So the thing that bothers me on some of this other stuff is you've got some of these people who are buying stuff from proprietary products from third-party countries, or third-world countries, and it's not level competition to some local bidders here. I think we need to specify a brand, not a likeness or whatever, a brand that everybody can get, and that's what we need to be going for.
We've put in this document what we're looking for, specific type of jersey. And we've also, after that, we've put in there, or the equivalent.
We don't have any of this bid spec stuff. We don't have any of the bid spec in our packet.
No, no, you don't. You got the other, you showed that in there. But it is, it is in the document, it's for the exact. I don't know if, I don't know.
Cause I heard what you said before and that's why I put it in there.
I don't know if.
Look, like for example, everybody can get Champ Pro, Champ Pro.
Well, I mean, if you bid out, I need a tractor. Are you going to bid out, you need John Deere? Are you going to bid out, you need Kubota?
I just want to make sure our local businesses are treated fairly and have an opportunity. And that has not been the case because there's been substitute or similar products that others can't get because of manufacturing agreements or whatever. I don't care if it's, if you list multiple brands, that's fine, but make it so that everybody can get it. And in those situations, as a retailer, most people who are in that field can get Champ Pro stuff or somebody, everybody, kind of like a major brand.
Is Champ Pro, is Champ Pro the?
I'm just using.
The name or equal?
I don't think we should say equal. That's, that's the problem.
Or equal to. That's, that's in pretty much every bid.
But we all know it's not always equal to. That's the problem.
But it's, it's, we want to have local vendors above anybody else. We want to keep it local. We've done several projects where we did that.
I'd like to see the bid spec before we vote to approve it.
Sure. No problem.
If everybody's okay with that.
No, that's why I did this earlier is I wanted to make sure we got everything right.
Does your board go through the bids? I mean, what's, what's Rec Advisor?
Nothing has changed in almost.
Yeah, the Rec Advisor board set up the bid pack.
They're going to do to approve it.
We have not had a meeting to approve this.
That's why I'm trying to figure out what's, what's Rec Advisor board, you know what I mean?
They have approved this document in the past and the only thing that changes is the dates.
So they've already seen this, this bid packet and they've made the changes from the board?
Not this specific bid pack for this season, no.
I mean, just from my perspective, I would, I personally lean on the Rec Advisor board because that's what we put them there for, to make these decisions.
I would be glad to run it by them, no problem.
But yeah, I mean, it'd be nice for us to see the bid specs as well. I mean, we're going to do anything before we approve a bid to go out and make sure that the document is in order. But I think that they should approve it first, the Rec Advisor board.
Do you want them to approve it every year if it's the exact same document?
Well, you made a change, you made a change to it this year, what you said. So it should go through the Rec Advisor board.
I think from an advisory board standpoint, they should, I mean, yeah, every bid that goes out, I think that they should look at that.
Yeah, they've approved these bids. I said, not changing their, their bids. Whatever they want to do.
Glad to do what you, whatever you want.
Just want to take any action about, if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah. I don't want to take any action. Wanted to, the NGYF A U football game schedule has come out and I wanted to inform you guys of this. Our first home game is September 13th. Will, all six of our teams will play, 6U, 7U, 8U, 9U, 10U, and 11U. You have the schedule there. Then we go over to September 27th. Again, all six teams play in that acre, or on that day here at home. And then October 4th is our last home game, again, all six teams will be playing that day. You have the master schedule for the whole league that I've given you and hopefully, I mean, you'll come out and watch these kids play. We start with six-year-olds and go up to 11-year-olds. We have 184 kids playing castle football this year. We have 25, 26 playing flag football, which we will be playing against Dover County this year. And then we also have 94 cheerleaders this year.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to permission to solicit bids for the fiscal year 25 GDOT safety grant work that has been approved.
This was the grant that came out kind of the last minute with the list of roads that sent the actions for the mission when we got the face art. Application on it. And what you said, you guys looked down at the bids at that road for those roads that forced us, the money was gone. And yet, you decided to settle, you know, it's all different. This is the only plan, this is not the regular, it'll make proceedings. Again, there, there's your roads and that's, the courts will be doing it based on what they recommended in the application process.
So these are all the roads that were recommended from GDOT? Is that how we came up with this list?
So, like a bear by a new prospect in Red Creek School Road, there'll be striping and rumble strips and I'm assuming a stop sign there.
I think a lot is going to depend on the money, where it comes back in, what, what it comes back in and what we're able to afford because you're putting this out for bid.
They go out and bid, right. They, they pay 70, we pay 30.
I'll make a motion, we put this out for bid, the recommendation of county administrator.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? Any questions? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote.
Just so folks know, we don't, we don't want to state first and buy a $100 million horse.
Well, we had this road striping money, wouldn't.
We did. Why would we want to spend dollars?
Right.
Exactly what I'm saying is on the, no, my point is on the 30% that the matching money. What comes from there.
Let's come out of the squaw. You're just like.
Okay. Second reading of the equine ordinance.
Nothing changed in that ordinance, but I did want to clarify, they get a very vocal projection about why you all were protecting horses and I wanted to make that clear. This is a state law, but the state law says that the sheriff can't enforce it unless you all have adopted the ordinance. So the whole purpose of this ordinance was just to give the sheriff full ability to do what he needed to do under the laws. And nothing's changed since the first reading of that. We didn't make any edits to, just asking for a second reading tonight.
I'll make a motion for the approved second reading for it to prohibit fireworks to stay within 200 yards without sight of 200 yards of any housing for horses.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion, questions? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote. Thank you, Kim. We'll move on down to new business approval of, huh?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I moved it wrong.
13A approval of command vehicle purchase.
Basically, we found a, we've learned we didn't need a command vehicle to stay out of whether we had, and everybody said, any of that command environment, we always stand out in the rain or something. This is kind of a little bit spread out and it's strictly designed for that. And we sent the, the, the tenants that do our maintenance work on all the fire stuff down, pretty close to that area. And one of the guys working with the local, he got his boss to run it and check it out. He spent about three hours Sunday afternoon on video, him checking everything, making sure that it all checked out okay. This is coming out, we're going to pay this out, the contingency funds, it's been put over to the AMA, probably 4, 5,000. I recommend we get it, and I say that you use all agencies, all.
Takes place of three vehicles in whatever state.
We put a dive here and everything in this particular truck.
I make a motion, we approve the purchase truck.
Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second vote for Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote. All right, then resolution for GDOT grant application for fiscal year 27?
Yes.
So maybe move on.
We're starting to apply for 27 now. This is our usual yearly grant that pays for transit, PD GDOT. We just have to have a resolutions each year. Y'all approving the application and approving, need to sign the paper.
Make a motion, approve the resolution and authorize general signing contract.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. Five oh vote. All right, then we'll move on to the repair and remodeling of the VITA offices.
A VITA is a mental health facility in the county. About every five, six, seven years, we end up having to go back into all the modeling work, patchwork, and all that stuff. And you'd run 20 to 30,000 dollars. This year, since we got the Ovi orthons, we've got a tank in the O L, so we should be able to spend that money to be used instead of our other parts.
That's these checks that was coming in that you've been getting.
I just need, look, yes, to make sure that's approved, we use, but if you want to find that, so let me double check that.
Who would have come up with that?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Pending county approval, county attorney's approval.
With the county attorney's research and approval.
Second.
All right. Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any questions or discussions? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on to credit for experienced sheriff's office.
The sheriff requested credit for six years, giving to Nick Spiegel. He was actually hired in February and just sometimes went through the crack and just kicked it out. So we'll make this retroactive to his hire date of six, six days.
I'll make a motion to approve and make it retroactive.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote. All right, then we'll move on to 13E. Mr. Jackson, is, if you'd like to come forward and make your request.
Y'all have a copy of Mr. Jackson's.
Yes.
We got, we got it.
Yeah, I was, I wanted to come by and see if I could move forward with this year investment that I had made a number of years ago on one night called Georgia Drive and thought we had everything, I thought everything was in order and when I hired the, and had the survey, had the water caps and, and the soil of Dallas that got on that property, but I did not reckon, realize that it was, were not recorded at the, at the, at the courthouse. And we had, I know we had talked with Carol about this here old road bed right here when we first, when we first got this track of land and subdivided it and there was a kind of, Mr. Teasley wanted to make sure how to handle this here old road bed right here on that side of that track. But my, my request is, is that if we could, if I could move forward with that to develop that, and put a house on that property. Just trying to subsidize my retirement income in this development. That's why I'm requesting that you can move forward.
What I understand was what you had explained to me several weeks ago was that you had done all this prior to May of 21.
Yes, sir. They states that out here.
And somebody dropped the ball and did not record the deed.
That's right.
To the property.
That's right.
Or the plats.
And soil analysis, we're doing also on the, also on that.
Right, before.
Prior to those dates.
So.
They just, they wanted enough, couple, couple samples represented and now they didn't
have enough samples around the lawn. Yeah, that's what she did.
My, my deal is, I got to live on old, the old, instead of like, include this, and think that's the way.
So this is basically an approval, the subdivision of two tracks, less than an acre apiece.
Correct.
If my memory is correct, we made a motion and we took a vote in the grandfather period. Need to find that out.
We did. We, was from July.
That's back several years ago.
That was July 21.
We made a motion saying we weren't going to grandfather anything, but going forward.
We did, we did run the date when we get.
December 1st.
That was July till December 31st in 21. That's when it was, all this stuff here took place in May, which was before, the Moore Tournament was July 19th, 21, when we put Moore, first Moore Tournament subsidy. But.
We need to do some research in the minutes and some of the actions that we've taken before we approve this. I'm not opposed to it, but we.
My thing was somebody didn't record the plats. Yeah, I don't, you.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
The problem, that's, it's going to set a precedent, it's going to cause, that's why we need to do the research.
Right. I got a question for the council. Who's responsible for recording the plats when they're surveyed, on, from a survey?
The owner.
The property owner.
They're not saying, probably a couple issues with this one from the previous ordinance too, but you just need to look at dates sometimes.
Okay.
You know, we may have an exception if things were already given, fully been this is putting a date in 21, but I'm not trained to qualify 21 either.
All right. Mr. Jackson from the consensus of the board here, we're going to do some more research and then go back through our minutes and I think Ms. Kim's going to do some research also, and then we'll get back with you in an answer.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. We come on down to 14, public comment. Do we have anyone here that would like to make public comment about any issues going on in the county today? Yes, ma'am? If you would, state your name and address and.
I have documents. I'm going to, I don't know if you want to pass this while I start speaking. I've written this all down so I can say it a little bit concise.
Terry, could you pull that mic down in front of her?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Mary Jackson. Most of you know me as Maggie. I own Big Heart Farm here in Hart County. Our family farm grows flowers and pumpkins and we open to the public for seasonal UPIC educational and agritourism events. I'm here tonight because I received a recent written interpretation from our chief tax appraiser stating that if our farm is enrolled in conservation or COVA, we would not be able to sell anything not produced entirely or solely on our property. And we also cannot allow outside vendors on our property even during occasional agritourism events. Here's my concerns. Um, state law, as cited by the assessor, which is OCGA forty-eight dash five dash seven point four, requires the primary use of COVA property to be bona fide agricultural. It is also explicitly allows incidental uses that are not detrimental to that primary use of our pumpkins and flowers. Agritourism is clearly recognized in the state statute in OCGA fifty-one dash three dash thirty-one as an allowable use. This includes inviting the public for seasonal events tied to farm production and incidental seasonal events as we do. Um, the case that has been cited, Terrell County Board of Tax Assessors versus Schoolzby in twenty, of twenty thirteen, involved a commercial grain mill that has effectively replaced farming as the primary use and primary income. That is nowhere near the same as a couple of small event, well, they're not exactly small, but occasional events that directly promote agri, agriculture in our community and our products. If this interpretation stands, it would eliminate not just our butterfly release and our upcoming fall harvest festival, but many similar events across several farms in the county. Um, that's not only a loss for farms, it's a loss for Hart County tourism, small businesses, and the local economy and community. And our largest event of the year, just to give you a little perspective, um, our summer butterfly release this year, we had over fifteen hundred visitors from every neighboring state around us, but ninety-five percent of our profits came directly from farm productions and sales, and most of our twenty vendors were local farms or makers. This is exactly what agritourism is designed to do, promote agriculture and create a positive economic ripple effect in our community. If this interpretation becomes precedence, it would prevent any farm under conservation from hosting, hosting even small community markets, pumpkin patches, Christmas tree farms, or holiday events that include outside vendors to promote further tourism and people joining us. This is, that's not in, in line with state law, legislative intent, or how other Georgia counties operate with their agritourism decisions. Um, I have sought legal counsel on this matter, and I'm asking that the Board of Commissioners, as well as the Board of Assessors, review and correct this interpretation so that it aligns with Georgia law and protects the future of agritourism in Hart County. I've prepared a fact sheet and a cover letter for all of you, um, that outlines the statutes, the case law, and the potential impact to our community. Um, we have two important events coming up, one that is in ten days in collaboration with the county ag extension office to do a pollinator census. Um, without a resolution, these events are at risk, and I'm unsure how to proceed. Um, I just, I'm kind of bringing this to your attention in hopes that we can work together to ensure that a precedence is set for agritourism and to support our agricultural community in this county. Thank you.
Well, are you saying that someone won't allow you to have these events?
Yes.
So, it's, she's been told that if she has these events, it's going to be a breach of her conservation.
I would be a breach of conservation.
I have talked to one member of the Board of Assessors today, that's when you got, I got your message, I just had, I'm trying to get you an answer.
No, it's okay, it's just, it's pressing for us.
I really feel like you're going to have to get an answer from the Department of Revenue, because that's what I've been trying to do today, and I have not been able to get you an answer.
Okay.
But I think that's where the, ultimately, the, the decision's going to have to be made. Kim, I don't know if you agree with that or not?
Well, the Board of Assessors meeting Tuesday on that, they called me and asked me, and they sent me a copy of this information.
Amanda said she had talked to you about it.
In the next couple of days, and meet on that Tuesday morning, but I think that's a Board of Assessors...
Right, it's not ours.
And you've asked the Board of Commissioners to, to, uh, take a interpretation of a law. Uh, we're not going to be able to do that, that's why we have a lawyer hired, and we rely on her for all interpretations of law.
Well, unfortunately, a county employee is making their own interpretation and telling me what I can and can't do, and...
Do what now?
Um, a county employee has made an interpretation in writing and told me that I cannot do these things, and that is not mine or my legal counsel's interpretation of, of what is being stated, and that is the issue. And I don't want to get years down the road and the Board of Assessors decide that I'm no longer in conservation and owe thousands of dollars in back taxes. Um, I went under conservation because I was having difficulties with twenty percent raises on our property tax year after year. We bought in twenty twenty-two, and we have been increased by twenty percent every single year. We thought going under conservation would be a solution. Um, I knew it would limit some of the things we could do with our business, but not literally our whole business model. We are agritourism to the definition. Um, and that's the hardship here, is if this precedence is set by the Board of Assessors, by you guys, if it's not...
We had certain...
Oh, yes, I know, I know, but that's, that's, that's the difficulty here, is there has been no, no direct community precedence.
I still think the Department of Revenue is going to have to give an interpretation on this.
Um, okay. What...
But I think Ms. Kim had mentioned that the Tax Assessor Board is going to meet on this, so let's let them handle it.
It's just, um, I know y'all only meet monthly, um, and, and there's not as much...
Twice a month.
Yeah, there's not as much opportunity. I have my next event, not this weekend, but the next weekend, with the ag extension office for the pollinator census, and I don't know what I can do and can't do on my property now, um, because the law that's being interpreted is very gray, um, and I just don't have a lot of direction.
I personally would like some clarification, pretty quick, because I wasn't aware of your situation, but we have other situations in this county right now that's going, um, and...
It's being targeted.
From what I'm being told, is conflicting with, or both, you know, what, what they're citing is state law, what they're citing from assessors conflicting, and, um, it seems like all these issues are coming out this year. Um, we definitely, as a, a Board of Commissioners, need to be made aware and understand this because it's affecting our constituents, and they're relying on us to give them answers, and, um, we definitely don't want to be in, or noncompliant with, with COVA and state law, because it's already laid out for us. So, I, I think that we're owed, uh, an explanation as far as that board, so we, I mean, these, these assessments are going out, these, um, these situations are obviously high on the docket right now. We're having to answer questions, we need to be made aware of what constitutes agritourism, what constitutes conservation, and where is that fine line, and, and deviate from this gray area.
Yes, that's why.
But I didn't even know you were having a situation, we're having a totally different situation.
It's happened, it's happened in the last forty-eight hours, and that's why I'm coming to you promptly, because I now have no direction on, on how to proceed with my events and to, um, I don't want to break conservation. I did that for a reason, and it's therefore a reason to allow farming and to allow property tax to be, um, lower, so that we can keep our farms and that we can continue farming. Um, but agritourism is protected under agriculture, and I just feel like that's being questioned right now, and what we do is very, in the, in the exact scope of what agritourism is defined as, so, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
It's a very clear distinction between what the Board of Commissioners can do, and it's, it's an appellate process, if, if, if they make that decision, and Ms. Jackson wants to appeal, and I don't think that process ever comes before you all, against the Board of Equilization, and then the Superior Court, just so y'all know, because I know that y'all are very interested in agritourism, that statute is very clear, you're only selling products off of your property. Um, but, then there is a Department of Revenue regulation that says, but sometimes you have incidental things and occasional things, and so, those two haven't been interpreted together in case law yet. The grain bin, uh, shot it back down to the Superior Court through the decision as to whether or not, uh, that actually complied with the law, um, because that was a money-making venture that had nothing to do with the cow farm that was there. So, uh, we'll take it back to the board and just let them get a good flavor of, uh, the Department Regulation on incidentals and occasionals and that type thing, so. This is probably going to happen a little bit more often, because agritourism is really coming, coming on pretty strong, so.
And I just keep thinking about the situations that haven't came before, that will be, and it's, it's almost like it's getting started here of late, and, um, I would like for us to be ahead of and on the up and up, because, I mean, it, a lot of these farmers are having to be, um, uh, creative here, and so they have found other avenues where they can make supplemental income, and I just don't think that they have gotten to this yet, from the assessor's standpoint, and they will be.
There are exceptions in the law. You can have a rodeo, you can have a wedding, um, there were, there were, there were things like this, and so, as agritourism and things like that come on board, they are making more and more exceptions. They've made solar fields an exception to COVA, um, so it, where it used to be so incredibly strict, they are making exceptions, but bringing vendors on your property, uh, hasn't even been addressed yet, so, it's just an odd one that Mr. Dorsey's correct, hopefully the Department of Revenue would, would lean on, but I'm, I'm guessing you're not, they're going to leave that up to the individual counties, I'll be your guest.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I've been a little concerned personally about artificial intelligence being so well-accepted right here in this county, and I have a personal situation to kind of reveal, expose, whatever. I'm over seventy, so I do not need to serve jury duty, okay? And I had signed six, eight years ago, probably, that I didn't want to be bothered for jury duty at the local office, where I should be, Frankie Graves. It was filed. Two years later, I got a notice to go for jury duty, and I took it down there and said, what happened? They looked in the files, we didn't have a copy of it, okay? All right, so, I'm oversending it, getting another paper, that got filed. And less than two and a half, three years later, I get another notice, so I get down there, and Frankie was right there. I said, what about this, sir? Well, um, uh, this is the problem. If I get the notice, I either put it aside, don't respond, sure, Michelle, tell, I know I filed twice. That day comes, I'm supposed to be going to jury, sheriff comes up, puts me in cuffs because I didn't respond. And that is something that I think is quite damned important, so as far as using AI, I question how good that's going to be in the file cabinet if my personal things got shunted aside and I still got to repeat. Just wanted to share this with the public in this county, and consider that anybody in public, even privately, how much we want to accept artificial intelligence. I'm not against it a hundred percent, but I have my questions and a damn good reason right there. I don't intend to, have the fellow county fellows come around and say, Cliffy, you're going in the cuffs, and away you go, you broke the law. Just how fallacies can happen, and what AI do to the filing systems that got lost, good question, we need to consider how much acceptance this is. That, that's basically my point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, anyone else for public comment? If not, can we get a motion to exit into, uh, executive session for litigation personnel in Little State?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Call for a vote all in favor, it's five oh. Thank you all for being here.